Welcome everyone, we'll call this meeting to order March 27th, 2024 at 5pm. And welcome those that are in the gallery with us tonight and those that are participating from home. And we welcome our staff who are here to give us information to help us make the best decisions on behalf of the residents of South Huron. And we will ask everyone to make sure their cell phones are either off or on mute. And last one to rise for all Canada, please. I think we got the gist, right? So we'll proceed, we'll begin our meeting with the land acknowledgement. So as we gather, we are reminded that the municipality of South Huron is situated in a tree 29 land that is steeped in rich indigenous history and home to First Nations, Inuit and Métis people today. And as a community, we have a responsibility to honor and respect this territory's significance for the indigenous peoples who lived and continue to live upon it and whose practices and spiritualities were tied to the land and continue to develop in relationship to the territory and its other inhabitants today. In the spirit of reconciliation and truth, we acknowledge the indigenous Shabi and the Hauda'as'oni peoples on whose traditional territory we are meeting. And thank you for that and move on to item number two, Ms. Su Colson, please.
The South Huron Council approves the agenda as presented.
Anna mover, please. Moved by councillor Vaughan, second by councillor Dietrich. Any discussion? Call a question, all in favor. That carries a seven. Disclosure, pecuniary interests and the general nature thereof from members of council, are there any disclosures at this time? And not seeing any, we turn it over to our staff and Madam Clerk.
This meeting is being held pursuant to section 26 of the Planning Act. The Planning Act requires that any municipal council review their official plan not less than every five years. South Huron's last comprehensive official plan review was in 2014. This meeting is to provide an overview of revisions that may be required to the official plan, details on the review process and to provide members of the public the opportunity to voice comments on appropriate changes to the official plan. Council is not making any decisions to changes to the official plan at this meeting. This meeting is simply an initial kickoff to the official plan review process.
Thank you. We turn it over to our staff in the county. Denise or Selena, who would like to take it?
Wonderful. Thank you very much. So Mayor, member of members of council, my name is Denise van Emersfort. I'm the manager of planning for the County of Huron. Very pleased to be here with you this evening with my colleague Selena McIntosh to initiate the five-year review of the South Huron official plan. We'll share my screen. I do have a presentation this evening. Sorry, I'm going to go back for a second. There we are. So to get started, we'll do it just a little bit of an overview as to the official plan, sort of why we're here this evening. And it's, it's important, I think, to, for a couple of things to be achieved at a section 26 meeting. First and foremost, we want to hear from members of the public. So later in this meeting, there will be the opportunity for members of public to address council and raise issues that they would like to see considered, ideas that they have for the five-year review and other changes that they identify for the official plan. It's also an opportunity for council to indicate to staff where you feel there are revisions needed to reflect changes that you're seeing in your community. And, and also for staff to identify where we feel revisions would be effective in creating clear, comprehensive policy for the municipality. So an official plan, as we know, is the foundational document to how we do planning for the municipality. The land use planning system in Ontario is a provincial-led system. The province's interests in planning are outlined in what's called the Planning Act and then the provincial policy statement. And we at the county and the municipal level are tasked with implementing that provincial vision in a way that's reflective and appropriate for our own community. So in 2003, the municipality of South Huron adopted its first official plan. And in 2013 subsequently adopted in 2014, the official plan was further reviewed and updated. We did do a significant, I would say, housekeeping update. It was approved by county council in January of this year, and that was specifically to implement revised housing direction. But we are in need of a comprehensive update to the plan, given that it has been 10 years. So the official plan is made up of policies and those policies certainly direct how the community changes and grows for years to come. So we look at an official plan, certainly its policies in terms of employment areas, housing, how we're protecting our finite natural resources, so farmland, aggregate resources, natural areas. So there's a policy framework as well as relating land use designations. And so what you see before you on the screen is the schedule B of the land use plan. And that does outline what are the current land use designations for South Huron. And then there's the appropriate policies that go with each of those land use sections. So we have a need to review not only the text policies, but also all of the mapping at this time. So again, a five-year review is an opportunity to reflect the changing conditions. So we think about demographic shifts. There's been some new issues comfort to the forefront since 2014. And we want to make sure that the official plan appropriately reflects those. So we want to be thinking about questions like, where should future growth be directed? Are the settlement area boundaries large enough to accommodate future growth? Where do we have opportunity for intensification to make sure again that we're making the most efficient use of land within our settlement area boundaries so that we can protect the valuable farmland and natural spaces that exist beyond boundaries? We also want to have an opportunity to review employment areas. Do we have sufficient growth for not only housing, but also for jobs in South Huron? So again, when we do the official plan and we're doing a five-year review, keep in mind that we're tasked with looking at a 25-year outlook. So that's a really important number to keep in mind. We'll be thinking about, and it lines quite well with the Watson Associates Housing and Population projections. Those go out to 2051, so again, about that 25 to 30-year planning horizon. And so that is what we will be planning for and shaping in terms of this five-year review. So Acting Clerk Wolf already did a really great job in talking about what the Planning Act directs that we review our official plan. So it's certainly time. There's been a number of provincial policies released, 2014, 2020. And we actually anticipate a new provincial policy statement will be released this year. So that may happen in the course of the review. Should that occur, staff will certainly bring council up to date as to the ramifications of that new provincial policy direction. But we've also had some other changes. The Huron County official plan was last reviewed and updated in 2021. And so as we are a local official plan, we are required to conform with both the county's official plan as well as the provincial policy statement. So we do need to make some revisions in order to meet that conformity test. So again, we've talked a little bit about what we're hoping to do this evening. Again, the idea is about discussing possible revisions, what we can expect from the review process, and certainly the opportunity for members of the public to give their input. I am going to go over a few of the staff identified revisions at this point. So as your, as the land use planners that, that work closely with South Huron, we certainly work with these documents on a day-in, day-out basis. And, and there are times, right, where we've identified there are things that could be updated, could be clarified. And so we've certainly wanted to highlight some of those for councils. So there's, you know, no surprises as we go through this process that council knows what to expect. So when it comes to some of the, some of the staff identified changes, we certainly want to look at how we're aligning future residential and industrial growth with demographic needs and servicing considerations. So there's been a number of key documents completed in recent years. Going back to 2015, we actually had an employment land strategy done by Watson Associates for the county. Looking at where do we have employment lands designated across the county? There are some recommendations for South Huron that I think would still probably hold true even today. So we'll be reviewing those. Population and housing projections, I have noted. The municipality has undertaken a water wastewater master plan. So it's really important when we're looking at where are we directing future growth. Growth boundaries need to be aligned with areas that are conducive to servicing in terms of physical servicing, right? So we're thinking about that water, wastewater, those hard infrastructure pieces. And then also thinking about soft services. So where are we best aligned to have growth in terms of our recreation, healthcare services, schools, all that other good stuff? Parking study findings is another thing I know the municipality has underway this year. So we'll certainly be thinking about how we can incorporate that into the OP. There's been other work taken by South Huron, so the Community Safety and Well-Being Plan, the climate change work is certainly something that we want to be bringing a little bit more to the forefront in the OP policies. There wasn't as much discussion around climate change in 2014. In addition to a land acknowledgement, and that land acknowledgement would be specific to South Huron, we'd like to go further and actually develop a bit of policies in terms of how do we do Indigenous nation consultation within the land use planning system for the municipality? And so that's something that we would want to consult with the nations in proximity. So Stoney Point and Kettle Creek have certainly been identified as the nation that we would like to begin that conversation with and to make sure that, that what we're putting into the official plan is informed with their input. We, one of the changes, I would say, from a staff perspective that we've noted is the settlement area policies. So we have a very long settlement area section. And my indication to council would be that you could expect that we would essentially rewrite that entire section. It's very repetitive. I would say there's a number of redundant policies. And generally, it's just not very user-friendly. It's quite difficult to navigate. And so if there was one section that I said to council, you know, the, the agricultural section is generally working quite well. The natural environment section, there, there aren't many changes. The settlement area section is where I anticipate us making the most staff identified changes. So just wanted to bring that to everyone's attention this evening so that again, there are no surprises. A few other things, shoreline management plan has been completed by ABCA in the, in the interim year. So we want to be thinking about how that direction within that plan should be incorporated into the OP. There's been a number of other changes to provincial legislation affecting land use planning, as we're all aware. Bill 23, Building Better Faster, there's many different bills. And so wanting to make sure that that's all reflected. One of the key changes would be complete application requirements. So I've noted that here. And we've discussed consultation with Indigenous nations. Mapping modernization. So I would say for a few reasons. When we think about AODA accessibility, maps are very difficult to make truly accessible. But we've come a long way in terms of the use of color, the design of the maps, to try to make them as user-friendly as possible. I would say if we look at the schedule C for Exeter, there's a number of things that simply aren't intuitive when you look at this map. Blue, for example, for most people, when they see blue on a map, they're thinking about water. Currently, that sort of looks like most of Exeter is underwater. So that would be an example of where we'd like to do mapping modernization such that it's a little more user-friendly and a little easier for people to understand the maps. Where we can simplify designations and policy direction, we certainly seek to. And on the schedule B, so on the broader map for Usborne and for Stephen, we do need to do some more updates to accurately delineate agricultural and natural environment areas. So I've included an example of what I mean by this, but just to give everyone some perspective. So the current schedule B for South Huron was based off of 1999 aerial photography. So the natural environment layer, right, would have been based off of black and white aerials. And so that helps us understand, based on the aerial technology that we have today, we have the opportunity to be far more accurate. And so I've given you a couple of examples so that council will know what to expect. So we're going to start up in the right-hand corner of this screen. See if I can move this. It's a little easier to see. Okay. So what we're going to see right there in that top right-hand corner is there's a natural area or what appeared to be a natural area in 1999. If you go to the current OP, you're going to see the schedule B in 2014 shows an agricultural field. And again, in that northeast corner, there's a natural environment designation. When we go to the 2020 aerial imagery, what you can see is that there's no natural environment feature in that location. So this is an example where a property is designated and zoned natural environment. And it shouldn't be. It should be agriculture and AG1. And I'll give you another example. So if we look in 1999, this is a, again, go to that top right-hand corner. You're going to see this is what the natural environment area looked like in 1999. You'll see in 2014, what we, we reflected, you know, again, using that technology, the natural environment agricultural designations, it's a bit scattered looking. If we now go to the 2020 image, what you can see is there's a very substantial natural environment feature on this property. And it is no way reflected by the schedule B designation. That will also be replicated within the zoning. So these things need to be corrected. All we seek to do is accurately reflect the features that exist on the landscape. If it's an agricultural field, it should be noted as agriculture. If it's a natural environment feature, it should be noted as natural environment. So this isn't, is a business-as-usual exercise, it's simply updating it so that it's accurate. One of the questions I get from council sometimes is, you know, well, you know, why is this important? And what I always want to remind council is that if we have errors in the land use planning documents and somebody was to come in, let's say, for example, and they wanted a permit to build a barn. The zoning bylaw, which is built off of the official plan, is applicable law for building permits. So somebody could come in looking for a building permit for a barn. And in fact, they're told your property is actually a zone natural environment. You're unable to issue that building permit until this gets resolved. If that resolution takes a zoning bylaw amendment and takes three months, we're going to have an unhappy landowner on our hands. So it's really important it's accurate. We start at the official plan level and that gets implemented into the zoning bylaw. Council will note that I recommended a concurrent zoning bylaw update. So what we'd like to be able to do through this consultation process is that when we go out to the landowners and we identify a situation like this, we would like to tell them, you know, we are going to be consulting on both the official plan and the zoning bylaw such that both documents are updated immediately following one another. So we'll do the consultation process concurrently. The OP comes into full force and effect, the zoning bylaw comes into full force and effect. It's efficient, it review, it removes miscommunication. The other thing I would note is that what's happened in your current official plan being updated in 2014, it wasn't until 2018 that you had a comprehensive zoning bylaw prepared. That was when we combined Usborne's Stephen zoning bylaw and Exeter zoning bylaw. And a four-year lag between those processes is not ideal for many reasons. You have staff changeover, you have changing landowners, you can have miscommunication as to the two different processes and how they're connected. So there's a lot of benefits to doing these processes as closely together as possible, if not concurrent. Okay. In terms of comments received to date, we have had one concern expressed regarding short-term rentals. And we have had comments received from Lake Huron Primary Water Supply System indicating a general interest in planning and development that may, anything that may impact the regional water supply system. I would say since the time of the submission of the report and the presentation, we have received additional comments from groups who are interested in consulting on the official plan. And so I'm, I'm feeling positive, I guess, or excited at this point that we have had a number of, of groups indicate their interest in consulting with us in the months to come. The consultation plan is outlined in the report. I would note that I did receive the input that a lakeshore open house in August is desired to meet the needs of that community. So certainly can make sure that that is done. And otherwise, this is a draft timeline, is to give a council a sense of what to expect. I have noted the need for a special council workshop late in May. So that'd be a special council meeting run like a workshop. And that's where we can have some feedback about the early ideas on what we've heard in our initial community tables, which will be getting right away in April. We are looking to make this a very interactive and consultative process. So we do have a few different ideas. The, the idea with a community table is about going to a group that we know has an interest as opposed to asking them to come to us. Tends to be far more effective, far more focused discussion, and we get more sort of valuable feedback. It's not to say that the community tables will only be with identifiable groups, though. We're certainly going to have some that are, are open. And so we'd have, let's say, if there was an agriculture one, we might have invited a few members that we know are otherwise interested in agriculture. But it would be put out as a general call for anyone who's interested. They can RSVP and come to that community table if that's an area of interest for them. Looking to do a series of public open houses in the fall. So as I said, one again, could be catered specifically to the lakeshore community. I anticipate we would have one here in Exeter and, and we could have other ones as, as needed. And then the public meeting would be estimated to be in December. Our goal is to wrap up this process within a one-year timeframe. If there is any changes to that estimated timeframe, staff will make council well aware in, and what the factors are that are affecting our timeline. In terms of communication, so we have a project webpage, it is up and running. We're going to be utilizing newspaper and radio advertisements, the municipality's social media channels, project information posted physically at local community centers. We've had some success at the libraries having sort of a pop-up consultation and a bit of an interactive opportunity. Sometimes we get a different demographic than typically comes out to official plan open houses. So certainly interested in trying some new things and seeing how they work. And we are proposing a direct mail. And whether that's in the form of a postcard or something that will get landowners' attention, particularly where they have a mapping change proposed. I will say the planning department has certainly received clear feedback in the past that where there is a change to someone's property in terms of mapping, that they would like to ensure that they are notified. And so it's a question of what we can do to get folks' attention. Sometimes a letter works well, sometimes a, a map of their property with the proposed changed outline. We have had another proposal of sort of a postcard, something that's a bit different that you're not used to getting. And that might get people's attention. What we don't want to hear at the end of this process is that someone was unaware that there was a change proposed that was going to have an impact on their property. So staff will make every effort to make sure that we get the word out there. So at this time, I guess I would first recommend that we continue on with the section 26 meeting for the purpose of receiving the community's input. And following that, I have two recommendations for council. Firstly, that you direct staff to evaluate community requests for suggested policy and designation changes received through the consultation process. And secondly, that you direct us to draft policy and mapping amendments to meet the requirements of section 26 of the act, in addition to other potential revisions. So council can expect to receive those, staff would begin working on them and you will receive them over the course of the project. Thank you.
Any questions at all at this point? This was Su Colson.
The South Huron Council received the report and presentation of Selena McIntosh, planner and Denise van Emersfort, manager of planning regarding the official plan review for information. And the staff evaluate community requests for suggested policy and designation mapping changes received through the consultation process. And further, that staff draft policy and mapping amendments to meet the requirements of section 26 of the Planning Act, in addition to other potential revisions.
Anna mover, please. Councillor Neve, seconded by Deputy Mayor. Any discussion? Councillor Oak.
Yeah, is this where we're able to ask some questions of Denise's presentation or Selena's? Okay, all right. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions at this time? Okay. So we have a mover and a seconder. If there's notice for discussion, call the question all in favor. And that carries a seven. Thank you. Turn it back to staff.
So if any members of the public are interested in asking a question or making a comment, if you could please come up to the podium, turn on the microphone, state your name and address and proceed with your question.
Any members of the public interested at this time? Yep, come on up. Just to the podium, turn the microphone on and just state your name, please. Welcome.
Hi, everybody. I am Sarah Merkel. I am a public health promoter with Huron Public Health. So my office is 10 Downing, or 10 Downing Street in Festival Square in Stratford. But I'm here representing the health unit. So I am the municipal liaison lead, which is a new portfolio for public health. And I'm also the built environment lead as well. Firstly, I want to say, I've been taking the municipal administration program through AMCTO. And I want to give a big kudos to both staff and council for the hard work that you do. Let me tell you, I've learned a lot about the municipal world in the last five weeks of my first unit course. And the amount of things that you have to know, have to read, the legislation, the, the reforms back in the 90s. All those things are really important to the work that you do. So I just want to give a nod because I've really appreciated in these last five weeks the amount that goes into, to your jobs. So big kudos to that. Perth County is just finishing off their full official plan. And Huron Perth Public Health did provide feedback to that draft plan released in December of 2023. We provided feedback in the following topic areas. Social cohesion and wellbeing, growth management and land use policies, environment, housing, green space and UV exposure, as well as transportation and connectivity. And so something that I would love for both citizens and the councillors here is to include health in all policies as you go forward with this work. And I can say that you already include that in your plan, but it's something to keep in mind as you move forward. Health in all policies is an approach based on the premise that good health is fundamental to a strong economy, a vibrant society. And that health is shaped by the decisions that are made outside of the health sector. Through the design, design and delivery of policies, health in all policies takes into account the health implications of all decisions and fosters collaboration across sectors to ensure that everyone has an equal, equal opportunity to live a healthy lifestyle. So some of these key considerations include your natural environments, your food systems, which, you know, I grew up on a farm. Our agricultural society and how they integrate into our urban lands is very important. Our marginalized populations and something to consider as you move forward is that health equity approach. So that means that all people have a chance to reach their full potential and are not disadvantaged by social, economic or environmental circumstances. And that's where we think about you, you know, our eight to 80 cities, you know. We want to consider how we design for both the children and the older adult population. And one of the things that we know in Huron County is that we have more people moving to this because they want to settle down here. That's great. But we have to think about how we design our small towns and villages to be able to allow them to live here and stay here long. So that's something to consider. Also, we know that South Huron has lots of farm migrant workers. How do we make sure that they have access to the places that they need to shop and be able to access services and things to be able to live? So it's something to keep in mind as we go through and look at these things further. One of the important things, and we've already touched on it here, is urban sprawl. We know that we don't get any of this farmland back if we give it up. So that's something we need to be really thinking about as we go through. And, and important in understanding how not the average citizen might understand the importance of intensification and what that might look like. And, and working with citizens to, to help sort of bridge that gap between agricultural land. And we need to build up a little bit. We're not, you know, we're not looking at 10-story buildings, but we're looking at being more creative in how we do intensification, creating places where we can be less car-dependent. I saw on the way into town here that you had your paved shoulders. What an awesome thing to be able to allow people to safely bicycle into town. Kudos to that. I know it costs you a lot of money to maintain, but I think that's really good investment that you're doing. Anyways, I, the engagement strategies that you already said sound excellent in meeting people where they're going to be. I think that's awesome. So kudos to that. Some other considerations for your official plan moving forward. You know, the United Way released their quality of life report. Awesome read. You know, the United Way released their quality of life report, awesome read. So many things that apply into an official plan, so for sure, be familiar with that as you're going through the policies. And then finally, considering how official plans al- already go into your community and safety and well being plans. So with that being said, thank you so much for having me and, uh, I hope to be a resource, uh, to you moving forward.
Great, thank you very much, Sarah, well done. Uh, any other persons from the public would like to speak at this time? Anyone from the public would like to speak at this time? No? Okay, um, this is a
Um, we also have an individual who's joining us remotely, Bill, I'm unsure if he'd like to speak, if he would.
Bill, are you there?
Uh, yes, nothing to say at this time, thank you.
Hey, thank you. I'm clear, anyone else that you're aware of?
None, none seen.
And no one from the public wants to speak at this time? Okay, thank you, there was a council, any comments at this time? Councillor Oak, go ahead, please.
Thank you, Mayor, um, and thanks, Denise, uh, for the opening remarks there. Um, you mentioned the, uh, Watson, uh, study, um, and its projections for South Huron growing from ten to fifteen thousand over the next till twenty fifty-one. I guess, um, as part of this OP and you mentioned settlement areas. Um, obviously our current settlement areas won't handle the, that, uh, growth. Um, what are our next steps or how is that going to be handled in this, uh, in this, um, look at the official plan as far as, uh, where settlement areas should be expanded or look to be expanding? Um, and how that process would work?
Go ahead, Denise.
Thank you, to the mayor. Um, one of the key components of an official plan review is what we call the land, uh, land needs analysis. And so sort of a, a sister document to this, if this official plan review, if you will, is what we're going to call the background report. And within the background report is going to contain the land needs assessment in addition to other, um, other items. What we do with a land needs assessment is we look at your current settlement area boundaries. And then we analyze what is the potential for intensification within that existing boundary line? And how much vacant land do we have within the existing boundary lines? We're analyzing not only for housing needs, but also for employment areas. So particularly industrial and then also commercial considerations. We'll be looking at a twenty-five year timeframe. So when we look at the Watson report and look at how many units are projected, let's say for Exeter over that thirty year period, we'll then be looking at the, the density recommendations. So it was a fifteen unit per hectare minimum density requirements. And so that's going to factor into how many acres of land are going to be required in order to accommodate those units. What Sarah said very eloquently just a few minutes ago is that we want to be encouraging of intensification, again, to efficiently use all of the acres within the settlement area. But there are times, you're right, where we may need to expand a settlement area. We'll be looking at, um, sort of a, what they call a comprehensive review in order to justify the expansion of a settlement area. Examples I would give potentially would be Exeter. Um, we will want to be looking at whether or not your other villages and hamlets, are they right sized? So in two thousand and thirteen, South Huron council undertook an exercise wherein they reduced the size of the settlement areas, um, for Greenway, for Corbett, um, there was a number of them that were sort of right sized, I would call. So we'll have to review that again and see whether or not there's sufficient lands within all those villages for sort of minor rounding out and infilling. Um, is there too much land potentially designated in some of those areas? And do we want to shift some of that towards the, um, settlement areas that have that full complement of services? So they would have hard services as well as soft services, right? Things that the community members need. We also want to think about how demographics tie into this. So we want to be thinking about as we look at the growth projections for South Huron and we know we have an aging demographic, what are the types of housing that we really want to be, um, incentivizing and, and really making sure that we have a lot of as of right opportunities available? Um, so I'm thinking of apartment buildings, to be honest, um, things that are going to accommodate people in those later seasons of life. Right? Um, we obviously have had some apartment buildings, um, going up in Exeter, there's a couple being built right now, one of which is the county build. So that's a great, you know, move in that direction. So, sorry, that was a longer winded answer to your question. Yes, we will be doing land, uh, needs analysis for settlement area boundaries. And it is possible that we will propose, uh, modest expansions to some. Uh, we may actually propose modest reductions in settlement area boundaries for others. Council could expect that information at the council workshop that would be held in May. We'll have the analysis ready by then.
Thanks Denise, follow up, councillor Oak.
Yeah, um, no, thank you, uh, and thanks for the response, Denise, uh, um. I guess I'm be surprised if there's some reduction in settlement areas. I think, uh, where there is growth going on right at the moment, uh, like in Creditan. And I think those settlement areas are gradually expanding here and, and some things are finally happening in, in those, uh, those builds. So I don't know that we'd want to scale back the settlement areas and, in those areas. But I guess we'll, uh, we'll wait and see what's presented to us. Uh, I think, you know, the main settlement area where the, the large percentage of the growth is going to be is in, is, is Exeter basically, uh, has proposed in that Watson study as well. Um, where the services are and where the, um, you know, the, uh, the services are sort of thing, so, um, so, um. One other question I had is as part of this official plan, um, there's been talk for as long as I've been on council here about a secondary plan. And, um, just wondering if that is going to be tied into, uh, this as well, um.
Denise, go ahead.
Seth, to the mayor. Um, certainly the current South Huron official plan conceives of a secondary plan being required for the Port Blake planning area. I think that's something that we need to analyze as part of this OP review. There is some question in my mind as to, so first of all, what is a secondary plan for those who are listening? A secondary plan is a more detailed land use planning, um, exercise that would be undertaken for a very specific geography to guide growth and development within that specified geography. And it's more detailed than what we would typically see in an official plan. What I would note about the Port Blake planning area is I think it's a bit of a misunderstood schedule within the OP. Much of the land within the Port Blake planning area is actually designated agriculture. It is not within a settlement area boundary. And therefore, the land that is within the settlement area boundary is predominantly, predominantly the lands west of highway twenty-one. So in undertaking a secondary plan for west of highway twenty-one, that would indicate that that would be an area in which we would conceive of seeing sufficient earth intensification, growth and development. I'm not necessarily convinced that that's in line with what the wishes of that community are or this council. So I think that's what I mean about exploring, is a secondary plan truly required for that area? Is there potentially an expansion to that settlement area that would come out of the discussion? Um, and then do we truly need a secondary plan? Or is there the opportunity within the official plan to provide special policy area direction? Be very similar to a secondary plan, but without having to undertake a separate planning exercise. I'm quite com, I'm fairly confident, I should say at this point, that I feel as though we can meet, um, the needs of that within the official plan. But I will reserve any further comment until I've had an opportunity to consult with that community and really hear what is their vision, um, for the Port Blake settlement area? Is there an opportunity to revisit, actually, what is within the settlement area boundary? Where do they anticipate seeing future development? And does that coincide with the, the vision of council?
Okay, thank you, any other questions at this time for Denise? Uh, councillor Oak, go ahead.
Yeah, thank you, um. Oh, I guess, so in the comments that were received, there was one about short term rentals. And I guess, is that something that is handled in an official plan? Um, I, I'm just asking that question.
Denise?
No, typically not, typically it's done under a separate short term rentals bylaw is the approach that many of, some of the neighboring municipalities have taken, not all.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions at this time? Okay, I'm not seeing any, uh, any questions from the public at this time? Okay, so, uh, doesn't appear to be any of the further questions or anyone online, uh, you're aware of this, well, very well, move on then. There's nothing further? Mr. Susan Carlson? Okay, that's, that's, uh, that's all the questions, we can move on to the onto our final here, uh, there's no closed session, no report from closed session, Mrs. Susan Carlson.
That South Huron council hereby adjourns at five forty P M.
Moved by deputy mayor, seconded by councillor Neve, any discussion, all the question all in favor? That carries a seventh.